Okay. Good morning, everybody, and welcome. This is our regular business meeting of the Mason County Commission for August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We're going to go ahead and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Trask, would you do us the honor of leaving this pledge today?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
I'm here.
Commissioner District Two, Kevin Schutie.
Here.
Commissioner District Three, Sharon Trask.
I'm here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Item number four, Correspondence and Organizational Business. Four point one, correspondence. You have correspondence come before the commission.
I do. The Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board sent in the following: Notice of Off-Site Tasting Room for the Hardware Distillery Company; United States Department of the Interior Bureau of Indian Affairs sent in Notice of Contiguous Land into Trust Application for the Port Lake Lee property, consisting of eight hundred and eighty-four point twenty-one acres located in Mason County; the Office of the Mason County Treasurer submitted a report to the citizens for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three.
Excellent. Item number four point two, Transportation Improvement Program Citizens Advisory Committee, our panel, tip cap membership opening news released by Loretta. There she is, in the back.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I didn't bring my official news release, so bear with me. We're looking for tip caps, volunteers. How's that? We do have two open positions, is that correct? Or three? And so we're seeking membership, and this committee makes recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners on our six-year and annual transportation improvement program. The Board will use Tip Cap's plan to guide road construction and other transportation projects over the next six years. All interested citizens are encouraged to apply to create a diverse team representing the broad population of Mason County. For details, contact Public Works Department, three six zero four two seven nine six seven zero, extension four five zero. To apply, reach out to Mason County Commissioner's Office, three six zero four two seven nine six seven zero, extension four one nine, or visit www.masoncountywa.gov. Applications are accepted until positions are filled.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Hold it, stay there, stay there. Yep, next up, we have Solid Waste Advisory Committee SWAC Membership Opening News Release. Loretta Swanson.
Also, thank you for making it large.
Yes.
More importantly.
There's some seats up front.
All right. So for this next item, oops, oh, oh, oh. Went way too fast. Oh, Mark, I lost it. SWAC, okay. Okay. Mason County is looking for volunteers to join the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, or SWAC. This committee reviews and advises on solid waste and special waste management, including disposal rates, options, waste reduction, recycling, hazardous waste, and composting. SWAC consists of at least nine members representing various interests, such as citizens, public groups, businesses, and solid waste industry, and local officials. Currently, representatives are needed for Commissioner Districts One and Two. Members serve a three-year term, and there are monthly meetings. For details, contact Richard Dickinson at three six zero four two seven nine six seven zero, extension six five two. And to apply, reach out to Mason County Commissioner's Office at three six zero four two seven nine six seven zero, extension four one nine, or www.masoncountywa.gov. Applications are accepted until positions are filled. Both of these, we thank those that volunteer, and definitely look forward to additional volunteers, and it's really fun and rewarding to work with our citizens and help and make recommendations to our Board of County Commissioners. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Yeah, the Citizens Advisory Committees are the backbone of everything we do here, which we try to make it so. So some of you are here for something today that's been in their advisory committee, and they've done a lot of work to help you to get here. You'll be talking about something we haven't done since, I think it's the fifties. When's the last time we did a road improvement district for the island? For the fifty? It's been a long time, but Citizens Advisory Committees have bring it up, so consider joining and becoming a member of one of our Citizens Advisory Committees. Next up, I have item number four point four, Certificate of Appreciation for Neil Jones, Mark Neary.
Thank you, Mr. Mark Neary, Mason County Administrator. So we'd like to recognize an individual in our community today, Neil Jones. Talking with Diane Zorn, who's in charge of parks and the park staff, they really wanted to specifically recognize this individual for volunteering at the county's union park, consistently going out, walking through the park, cleaning up trash, making sure that it's presentable and that it's safe for people to come and enjoy. So definitely want to take this opportunity for the Commissioners to actually present Neil with a certification of appreciation. So Neil, are you in our audience? Oh, there you are right there. So come on up here and say a few words, please.
All I've got to say is these guys are extremely hard workers, and it's a pleasure to actually help them out when I have a chance to do that, so. And plus, the park's basically my front yard, and they mow it for me every summer, so happy. Thank you for that recognition.
Come on, Steve, come on up with Commissioner Schutie, and come down and present you with that certificate.
Oh, yeah, thanks, Neil. Just a good neighbor out in Union, and we do have a great parks team, but your help is invaluable to them and to the whole community that takes advantage of our wonderful park in Union. And so just wanted to extend this certificate of appreciation to you, and appreciate all that you do on behalf of our community.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, for sure.
I appreciate it.
Yes. Perfect. Thanks, Neil.
Thank you, Neil. Thank you, Commissioner. We have more chairs that are being put out right now if we need them. You can also enter through the other door if you'd like. We're going to wait a minute, folks, so that they can go ahead and come in and.
Oh, we're doing a swap.
Got what?
A swap. So the parks folks already got their stuff, so they're out. Opened up some more seats.
All right, so we're back to correspondence and organizational business. Mackenzie, has any other correspondence or?
Thank you.
Next up is our open forum for citizens input. This is your opportunity, and those in Zoom, to talk to the commission and the community, because you are being recorded and it's being put out live, about any item that is not on the agenda. If you're here to talk about an item on the agenda, when it comes up, you'll be given that opportunity to talk about it at that time. But right now, if it's not on the agenda, this will be your opportunity. There's a three-minute per person maximum. We keep it to fifteen minutes total, so if you don't mind, don't use the whole three minutes if you need to, just blast it, let us know what you need and what you have going on, and we'll keep going. So with that being said, if your item of discussion is not on the agenda, please raise your hand in the room, and I will call on you, and you can come forward and talk to the commission. Is there anybody in the room who would like to speak to the commission and the public on items not on the agenda? I see none. Is there anybody in Zoom who would like to speak to the commission on an item that is not on the agenda? If so, please raise your hand, or unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you. Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to speak to the commission or the public on any item not on the agenda? Unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you. It's going to be a good meeting. Here we go. Next up is item number six, which is the adoption of today's agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we adopt the agenda as presented. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Item number seven, approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of minutes from July first, July eighth, July fifteenth, July twenty-second, July twenty-ninth, and August fifth, two thousand and twenty-four's briefings, and July second and July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, regular meeting minutes, as well as July eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, special meeting minutes as presented.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded for the approval of the minutes of July first, eighth, fifteenth, twenty-second, twenty-ninth, and August fifth for our two thousand and twenty-four briefing minutes, July second and July sixteenth for the two thousand and twenty-four regular meeting minutes, and July eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, special meeting minutes. Any comments or questions or polls, or hearing none? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Next, we'll be reading the action agenda to the public. Each item on the action agenda will be voted on with a combined vote for all of us, but after we read it into the record, you will have an opportunity to ask a question to help you decide whether you want to take it off for a separate vote, or if you want to testify on it, you will have it, ask us to take it off for a separate vote, and we will do that as well. So I'm going to go ahead and read it into the record first. I will read item number eight point one through eight point four. Commissioner Schutie, if you wouldn't mind reading eight point five through eight point eight, and Commissioner Trask, eight point nine through eight point one-two. Item number eight point one, approval of the Warrant and Treasurer's Electronic Remittance Claims Clearing Fund, Warrant Number eight one zero six five four five dash eight, or through eight one zero six seven two four. The amount, one million, three hundred thirty-one thousand, nine hundred forty-five dollars, ninety-one cents. Treasurer's Electronic Remittance, four hundred and eight thousand, two hundred thirty-four dollars and six cents. Item number eight point two, approval for the county engineer to execute supplemental agreement number two, increasing the on-call structural engineering agreement with sergeant engineers by an additional fifty thousand dollars. Item number eight point three, approval for the county administrators to sign a quote through Enterprise for a Ford Explorer for juvenile probation for an estimated cost, forty-one thousand, eight hundred thirty dollars. Item number eight point four, approval of the Cross Jurisdiction Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, regarding alert warning and notification sent through Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA Integrated Public Alert and Warning System between Thurston County Emergency Management and Mason County Emergency Management.
Mr. Chair, item eight point five, approval to appoint Stacy Vaughn to the Pacific Mountain Workforce Development Board of Directors for a three-year term, expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven. Item eight point six, approval of the Shelton Family Center Consolidated Homeless Grant Contract Amendment for an additional one hundred and ten thousand dollars. Item eight point seven, approval for Public Works to advertise, set bid opening dates and times, award contracts, and approval for the chair to sign all pertinent documents for the call for bids for routine paint line, asphalt emulsion, and manufacturing and stockpiling of chip seal aggregate for the two thousand and twenty-five calendar year. And item eight point eight, approval for the county engineer to procure and finalize all agreements for cultural resources, structural engineering, geotechnical, and materials testing services as necessary for the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six calendar years, with an option for the county engineer to extend the agreements for an additional year from the county MRSC consultant roster. The maximum expenditure for each service agreement shall not exceed two hundred thousand dollars per calendar year.
Item eight point nine, approval of the county road closure on Little Egypt Road from Monday, September ninth to Wednesday, October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at approximately mile post point three-three for the North Fork Goldsboro Bridge Rehabilitation Project. Item eight point ten, approval of the letter designating the applicant agent and alternate applicant agent for disaster four seven seven five D R W A severe winter storms. Item eight point eleven, approval to rescind approval of the following two thousand and twenty-three open space application pursuant to the recommendations of the county assessor and community development, Douglas and Kelly Palmer, parcel number one two 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 zero dash three four dash nine zero three four zero. And item eight point twelve, approval of the letters to the Mason Conservation District and United States Army Corps of Engineers regarding the Skokomish River ecosystem restoration and the intent to cease property, most property acquisitions.
So now that all these items have been read into the record, this is your opportunity to ask a question that may help you to decide whether you want something taken off for a separate vote. If so, please raise your hand, and I'll call on you right now. Is there anybody out in Zoom that has a question that would help them to decide whether to take an item off for a separate vote or would like to testify? Please raise your hand, or unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you. Anybody on Zoom would like to ask a question regarding what was just presented, please unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you. Hearing none? Are there any items that the commission would like taken off for a separate vote?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to remove item eight point five for a separate vote, because I'll be recusing myself.
Commissioner? Is there anybody in the public has any items they would like taken off for a separate vote? If so, please raise your hand, and I will call on you. Are there anybody in Zoom that would like an item taken off for a separate vote? If so, please raise your hand or unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you. Anybody on Zoom who would like to have an item taken off for a separate vote, please unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you. So you know the reason why I do it twice for them is sometimes they don't know, and they're trying to find a way to unmute, and so we just give them a little extra time. Okay, so with that being said, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of today's action agenda, items eight point one through eight point twelve, with item eight point five being removed for a separate vote.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded for the approval of the action agenda in its entirety, with the removal, though, of item number eight point five. With that being said, are there any comments or questions? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Next up, item number eight point five, approval to appoint Stacy Vaughn to the Pacific Mountain Pack Mountain Workforce Development Board of Directors for a three-year term, expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven. Want to just go ahead and make a motion unless you have a?
No, yeah, I'll make a motion. I would move to approve the appoint, to appoint Stacy Vaughn to the Pack Mountain Workforce Development Board of Directors for a three-year term, expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Okay, I will second. It has been moved and seconded for the approval to appoint Stacy Vaughn to the Pacific Mountain Pack Mountain Workforce Development Board of Directors for a three-year term, expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven. Any comments?
Just real quick, this is a fun board to be on. It's a big board. It can, it consists of five different counties, I believe. So we all work together, and if you don't know anything about Pack Mountain, take a look at it, because it's a, it's a pretty, pretty cool program. And I want to thank Commissioner Schutie for filling the spot on the EDC for our county as well, so.
With that being said, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next up is item number nine, which is other business, department heads and elected officials. Are there any department heads or elected officials who would like to speak to the community at this time? Nobody in the room? Is there any department heads or elected officials on Zoom that would like to speak to the commission at this time? If so, please unmute yourself, say your name, and I'll call on you. Anybody on Zoom that is a department head or elected official wishing to speak? Hearing none, we're going to go ahead and move on to item number ten, which is our hearings. Item number ten point one, I'm going to open. Public hearing to consider approval of resolution declaring tax parcel number three two zero zero five dash three one dash six zero zero seven zero as surplus and approval of its sale. Staff Mike Collins. That's not Mike.
She's got more hair.
Yeah.
Tina, good morning. Tina Lovejoy Schaefer. For this parcel number, it's just a remnant of an old CRP for realignment for Johns Prairie. We are asking whether or not you're going to declare surplus property and approve a sale for sealed bids. Pretty much, we've had contact with the adjacent parcel owner along with another HOA on Johns Creek Road interested in that little corner piece. So we've had two different parties, which is why we said whether or not you would put it for sealed bid or not.
On this, you're going to be asking for two separate motions. Is that what I'm understanding?
Well, declaration of surplus property and approval of sale. Yes.
Also, in that first motion you have is to also set up the hearing, so that's why it was a little confused, but we got it, we'll take care of it. Is there anybody in the public that has a question for staff regarding her presentation? Is there anybody on Zoom that has a question for staff regarding the presentation for surplus in this property? If so, please unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you, or raise your hand. Anybody on Zoom that would like to ask a question of staff regarding this issue? Say your name, I will call on you. Hearing none? I'm going to close that aspect. We're going to move into public testimony. Is there anybody in the room that would like to testify on this issue? If you'd like to testify, raise your hand, I'll call on you. Hearing none? Is there anybody in Zoom who would like to testify on this issue? If so, raise your hand or say your name, and I will call on you. Anybody on Zoom that would like to testify on this issue, raise your hand or say your name, and I will call on you. Hearing none? I will close public testimony, and we will move to Commissioner deliberation and/or motions.
Mr. Chair, I move, I move to declare the parcels listed in Exhibit A as surplus property, and authorize the property manager to offer all said property for sale by sealed bid for the notice of sale as presented.
And I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to go ahead and declare this property surplus and set it out for bid. Is there any further comment? Any further comment? Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any approval, uh, knows? Hearing none? Motion carries. We'll move on to the second motion. Would you like to make that?
I thought that was included in the first.
Yeah, kind of. Okay.
What, what are you looking for?
We declared it, and we're going to set it up for the thirteenth? The meeting?
That's today.
Okay. So that's what that is, all right. Okay. Next up, item number ten point two, public hearing to consider approval of an ordinance amending the Department of Community Development's fees for building permits adopting the revised fee schedule, staff Todd Cunningham.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for hearing this item. Todd Cunningham, Billy, official of the county. We put a lot of work into this and briefed you on July eighth related to it being prepared. Took about a year or so, and a lot of study and so on, and we are making the recommendations that are before you today related to those fee changes. Staff's asking for a, an approval of this.
Is there anybody that has any questions for staff regarding this presentation? Anybody in Zoom have any questions for staff regarding the presentation? Please unmute yourself, say your name, and I'll call on you. Anybody in Zoom land have any questions for staff regarding presentation? Unmute yourself, say your name, and I'll call on you. I don't see anything. Then we will go ahead and move into public testimony. Anybody who'd like to testify on this issue? Please raise your hand, I'll call on you. Is there anybody in Zoom that would like to testify on this issue? Please unmute yourself, say your name, and I'll call on you. If you want to testify, raise your hand or unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you. Public testimony is hereby closed. Go for Commissioner deliberation and/or motion.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we adopt the ordinance amending the Department of Community Development fees for building permits and adopt the revised fee schedule.
Second. It's been moved and seconded for the approval to adopt the ordinance amending the Department of Community Development fee for building permits and adopting the revised fee schedule. Any comments? All in?
Great job.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries, and that hearing is closed. Now for the one you've all been waiting for. Next up, approval of a resolution, finding the formation and construction feasible for the Shetland Road Improvement District, RID number two zero two four dash zero one, and hereby approve ordering the improvements and integrating this section of Shetland Road into the county road system. and integrating this uh section of Shetland Road into the county road system contingent upon the determination of non-significance DNS being issued on Thursday, August fifteenth, twenty twenty four. Staff? Loretta, are you bringing this forward? Nope? Lovejoy is?
Yep.
Lovejoy's on it.
We are requesting the board adopt a resolution finding the formation and construction feasible for the Shetland Road Improvement District, number twenty twenty four dash zero one, and hereby approving the ordering of the improvements to integrate the section of Shetland Road in the county road system contingent upon the determination of non-significance being issued on August fifteenth, twenty twenty four. Uh let's see. We have done the proposed district formation, the cost estimate assessment methods and funding sources. And we've had a few public inputs, compliance with the statutes and legal review, verification of adherence to legal requirements, and community impact, environmental consideration and analysis of the project's efforts in the community and environment. And this basically is whether or not you guys are gonna determine if it's feasible and move on from there.
Okay, thank you. Loretta, would you like to say something?
That's okay, commissioners.
Yeah, please.
Yes, yeah. Um in terms of background, commissioners, this has been a long road coming, so there was a preliminary petition some time ago that was circulated throughout the community. After the preliminary petition process and sharing information with with the commissioners, there was a formal petition, so Mason County Public Works assisted with providing facts and information that was mailed out to each and every property owner within the RID district boundary. And this notice and information included what the property boundaries were, what the um proposed assessment is based on some assumptions right now today. So um those assumptions include the period of time for the assessment, the assumed interest rate, the um type of financing, who is benefiting from the road improvements, and those are the folks that are actually using the road. Um so all of these things were spelled out in the information that was mailed out to the property owners. Per RCW, since this was initiated by a petition process, the property owners had up until um last night, at five o'clock, I believe, to submit notice of any changes. So if, for example, I were a property owner and said, yes, sign me up for this RID, if for some reason I changed my mind, I had up until five o'clock yesterday to um to give notice to the commission that that was the case. And if I could maybe ask McKenzie if any, if we received any changes in notice from folks?
I didn't see any changes.
Okay, and I don't believe we received any notice either. So at this point, uh all of the folks that originally signed the petitions um supporting are still remain supportive. To for the board to find that the district is feasible and sufficient, there are two tests. One is that you find that the majority of the property owners that front the road to improve are supportive, and that is the case. And you also need to find that the majority of the property owners within the district itself are supportive. And that is the the case also. So this this um preliminary petition or the formation meets those two tests should you choose to form the district. Uh anything else detail-wise, I guess, commissioners, that we can share with you? The reason that it cannot be formed today, should you decide that you want to do that, is that we're um waiting for the SEPA determination to run its full course, and that's two more days, the fifteenth, basically. So you could take action, but it would be effective on the fifteenth after the SEPA determination is complete.
And as we were speaking earlier, uh the last time we did this was the Harston Island Bridge, which that's a long, long, long time ago. This is not something that we normally do. I know the last time we were here, we had some people that were angry. We'll try to explain to them a little bit is is it's not our road. They're mad because of the road condition, but it's not our road. This would be changing that to where eventually it would become a county road. Um any questions or comments uh for staff? Okay, ladies, hold on. It's up to them too.
Okay.
Is there anybody here in the room that has a question regarding the presentation of what she had just explained? Yes, please.
Is the thing that's that would uh materialize in a couple of days, is that like an environmental impact sort of thing? Is that what that is?
It's a it's a project, um yes, it's like an not an environmental impact, but an environmental assessment of if we make these improvements, what are the potential environmental impacts and are there any and how will those be mitigated?
Any other questions for staff regarding her presentation in the room? I see none. Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to uh ask a question of staff regarding her presentation? If so, please unmute yourself or raise your hand, say your name, and I will call on you. Anybody on Zoom that has a question for staff regarding presentation? Hearing none? I'll go close that part of the hearing and we will move into uh the community. This is your opportunity to testify. You don't have to. Uh it kind of you already see where it looks like it's probably going, but if you feel a real need that you want to testify, this is gonna be your opportunity. I want to remind you of an old saying, though. You've heard uh snatch victory out of jaws and defeat. Don't snap defeat out of the jaws of victory. So with that being said, uh is there anybody in the room who would like to testify at this time to the commission to help us make up our mind? None? Is there anybody in? Oh yeah, I'll get to you. Is there anybody in Zoom that would like to testify on this issue? If so, please unmute yourself, say your name, and I'll give you an opportunity to speak. If there's anybody in Zoom, raise your hand or unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you, give an opportunity to speak. I have none. We have some from the public. McKenzie?
I do. So it's a little bit of testimony and a little bit of question. It's a lot combined, but it was asked to be read in its entirety. Um it says, my name is Alana Hess. I certify that I am a real property owner located within the Sunny Woods, AKA Huckleberry Woods subdivision. I submit the following as my comment testimony regarding the proposed Shetland Road Improvement District hearing, the RID. I appreciate the support of the RID by the Mason County Board of Commissioners, the board, and by Mason County Public Works. Generally, I support the RID on the conditions that the assessment, valuation, and procedure of the RID adheres to applicable law. My support is also conditioned on the responses received from the board and reserve all rights that I have under applicable law regarding my right to object to the RID. I desire that the following statements and comments are made part of the record regarding the RID and request that the board respond to each inquiry during the public meeting held on Tuesday, August thirteenth, twenty twenty four at nine fifteen AM in the Mason County Commissioners Chambers located at four eleven North Fifth Street, Shelton, Washington. I request that the board clarify and confirm the board's positions on various issues associated with the RID and make the same part of the public record. Number one, my property is located on Sunny Woods Road, which will not receive any of the frontage improvements. Please describe the process that the board used to determine proposed district for the RID. Please also detail how the board determined which lots, tracts, and parcels of land and other property which will be specifically benefited by the RID pursuant to RCW thirty six eighty eight zero fifty. Do you want me to give time for you guys?
Uh Loretta, would you mind stepping forward, please?
I I have a copy. Yes, thank you, Martha.
Let's go ahead and hit with our first question regarding the benefits.
Sure, so the question again was, please describe the process used to determine the district for the RID. And that's fairly simple. It is those properties that are benefited by using Shetland Road. So the district boundary includes the properties that either have access to Shetland or front Shetland um and includes all of the the Sunny Woods community because they all drive across Shetland to get in and out to their parcels.
And that's the same for the question, who benefits is those that have access to that?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, alright.
Number two, please describe the process which was used to assess all seventy-two non-frontage real estate parcels. What was the method that the board used? Did the board consider the various sizes of the parcels when making the assessments? What other factors were used to make the assessment? Please provide the board approach in detail. Was the procedure used adopted by the board after taking into consideration similar RID in the state of Washington and or surrounding areas?
Okay, so um there is what is there is state statute or an RCW that defines how you go about the process of establishing an RID. We first and foremost followed that. There is also an LID RID manual that has been published that helps provide checklists and best practices. So guidance on how to move through an RID process, and that was also utilized um and referenced. And then in terms of the method for assessment or the um how it was basically um looking at the acreage, what potential there might be for subdivisions. So the folks that are in the Sunny Woods community, very few, given the zoning, have the ability to further subdivide. So essentially, it was one trip or one um one home generating trips. You're all doing the same trip generation. If for some reason you have forty acres and could somehow subdivide it, that might be a different calculation, but that is not the case here.
Just so you know, normally we wouldn't do it this manner, but because this is our first one that we've done all these years, I don't want to screw it up. So literally, that's why I'm allowing out these questions, just in case something happens or something triggers it. This is too important to try and go backwards once it starts. You guys have worked too hard. So please bear with us as we do something that's out of the ordinary, because I guess this is time for testimony. We just let them testify. They bring it into the thing, but this might be too important, so please, a little patience. Go ahead.
Um number three, pursuant to RCW thirty six eighty eight one forty five, how did the board determine the value of the in-kind donation of the property owners for purposes of the RID? Was this done by formal appraisal? If so, please identify the name of the appraisal company that performed the appraisal. Did the appraisal company provide appraisal reports for each property? Did the landowners submit their own appraisal for the purpose of the in-kind donation? Will the commission make available all appraisal reports, purchase transaction documents, and other records associated with the calculation valuation of the in-kind donations?
Okay, so regarding this, there was no formal appraisal. It was based on the assessor's valuation of the property. There were title reports pulled to make sure that title matches ownership, all of those good things. And the basically the valuation was made on calculating what the square footage is for the right-of-way and based on the assessed value per square foot. That's what the the um in-kind contribution was determined to be. And I want to just remind folks that this is preliminary at this point, at this point, at the formation. And there comes another step later in the process, and that is the final assessment role. Right now, the commission is looking at is their value for the entire RID boundary. When it comes to the final assessment role, that's when we start looking at specific individual property assessments.
Number four, what was the board's role with regards to the preliminary petition for the county RID? Was this prepared by a landowner within the district? Did the board prepare this petition? The petition failed to contain critical information about the RID, including the description of the district in which landowners were included in the district, financing options, and other critical information necessary to form an opinion regarding the RID. It is now my understanding that a post-hearing ballot vote will not occur.
Okay, so um regarding the, there there are two steps if an RID is to begin by the petition process. One is what's called a preliminary petition. So this is kind of like the straw vote of, alright, how many people are interested? Can we even form an RID? Are there people that enough folks that want to move forward? And then there is the actual formal petition. So in the preliminary as um petition process, Mason County provided some facts about here are some options, here's what we think the preliminary construction costs might be, here's a range of potential financing. We, because we don't know. What is it? So what's the interest rate? What is the length of the term? So we provided a a range for folks to take a look at. We also provided just some basic facts about what's the process, how do you move through it, that type of thing. So that was the role that the county provided um to assist the property owners to make that preliminary determination. After it was um determined that there were enough folks interested in proceeding ahead, we assisted by preparing the actual um mail-out information for the petition. So we prepared the petition, we prepared the attached documentation, um updated and verified what our construction cost estimates are and the potential financing scenarios. And I think I answered all of that. Did I get it all, McKenzie?
I think so.
Okay. Yes.
So this this process was actually initiated by individuals within the community?
Correct, yes, and thank you. That gets back to the last um question that it says, it's now my understanding that a post-hearing ballot vote would not occur. So the ballot is something that would happen if this district were actually formed by resolution and does not apply in this case.
Since it was a petition initiated by the individuals within that community?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Go ahead.
And number five, please explain the annual assessment cost of six hundred and fifty-seven dollars and thirteen cents. Does this annual payment reflect principal and interest associated with the assessment?
Yes.
Okay. What is the actual interest rate?
Um the assumed interest rate that we sent out was six percent, but we were also clear in the notice that that very well could change.
Um are there additional options for payment of the assessment? For example, if the landowner wanted to avoid paying interest, could the landowner make a one-time payment without penalty rather than financing the assessment over the ten-year period?
Yes, RCW does allow for prepayment, and that would be part of what um when we form or establish the final assessment role, we would want to do some polling about who might be interested in prepayment because that will help the treasurer and other folks determine what is the final amount to actually be financed.
Um how was the rate of interest determined for the assessment in the term of years? I request that the board not consider RID financing that includes restrictive contingencies, disallowing lump sum and or prepayment without penalty.
Okay.
That's a statement. Go ahead.
Well, there was a question at first, but then it continued on. Um just for how was the rate of interest determined for the assessment in the term of years?
I'll, Lisa, you can straighten me out if I say otherwise. If I state incorrectly, but basically um Lovejoy and our team have been coordinating with the treasurer's office for some time about what are the potential sources for financing the RID and what might be the interest rates and terms available. And the treasurer's office has been great in providing us the latest and greatest information. And just again, to remind folks that for better or worse, those conditions change. Um and so when it comes time to actually form the final assessment role, that's when we will have the the most recent and updated information from the treasurer's office.
And and the actual interest rate that is acquired by the treasurer is the interest rate that will be used in the calculation of the?
Correct.
So there's not a difference between the interest rate that our treasurer is able to receive on financing versus what's billed to those customers. It's a direct relationship.
Much, yeah.
And there, I'm sorry, if I could add one more thing, I'm sorry, Commissioner. Um there are other things that we're continuing to investigate with. with the assessor and the treasurer's office about deferrals. And so those are the details that are affecting individual parcels that we will be bringing back to the commission for the final assessment role.
Number six was, will assessment credit be granted to the owners' holding deed at easement for donation of the value of said Shetland Road easements to the county?
That is the proposal right now, and that was the basis of the information that was mailed out to the property owners.
Okay, and then the final paragraph was, "I believe that the responses to these questions are critical to determine whether the RID is proper and the procedure required under Washington law regarding the implement of an RID has been satisfied. I request that the Board address each question in the public hearing with an oral reading of our question, followed by the Board's on-the-record response. I thank the Board in advance for its response and attention to my concerns. Regards, Alana Hess."
My response is, whatever she said. I totally had to be accurate. Commissioners, is that good? We all have the same response. Is that, what you, okay. Now that all that has been read, some of you may have other questions that have come to mind or might want to testify. Now is your time. I'm not going to close it without asking you first. Is there anybody who would like to testify? Please raise your hand, I'll call on you. None? If there's anybody in Zoom that would like to testify, please raise your hand or unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you. Unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you if you would like to testify. There are none? I'm going to close public testimony and move to Commissioner deliberation.
Mr. Chair, I move the formation. Sorry, trying to.
It's okay.
Trying to make a motion out of the requested action here.
I had a different one, you had the first one, so.
I move adoption of a resolution finding the formation and construction feasible for the Shetland Road Improvement District number 2024-01 and approve the ordering of the improvements and integrate this section of Shetland Road into the county road system contingent upon the determination of nonsignificance being issued on August 15th, 2024.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded that we adopt a resolution finding the formation and construction feasible for the Shetland Road Improvement District, RID number 2024-01, and hereby approve the ordering of the improvements and integrate this section of Shetland Road into the county road system contingent upon determination of nonsignificance DNS being issued on August 15th, 2024. Comments?
What a process. Want to thank everybody for being a part of that process and for a new adventure in the life of a commissioner, so. And I especially want to thank staff and, and our treasurer and our assessor's office and, and everybody that worked on this because what a process this has been. And it's been an education for all of us. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not voted on yet, guys. It can all fall apart before you get done. Commissioner?
Yeah, just I'll, I'll echo Commissioner Trask's comments and just say that this is a testament to the community and your perseverance in getting through this process and, you know, having visited your community a while ago when this was just kind of getting up and running to being here today. It's, it's really exciting to be a part of this. When I first got on the commission in 20, my first year on the commission was 2017, and we had, we had done the first subdivision in the county in, in more than a decade. And now that I'm wrapping up my time on the commission to be able to do our first road improvement district for the first time in several decades is also really exciting. And so you guys are part of, I think, the first domino to fall for our county to really start utilizing this process to improve our infrastructure and provide a better level of road service to communities in our, in our more rural parts of the county. And so unfortunately for you, some of this was a little, you guys were a little bit like the guinea pig of how we go back through this process, but your patience was very much appreciated as we worked through it. And I'm very proud to support this today. I can't wait for this to go through and finally get work started up in your neck of the woods and, and to see the, the high-quality road that you're all going to have to get into your, into your neighborhood now. It's great for kids and school buses and mail service and all those other things, emergency services, hopefully don't rely, don't need those. But it's good, it's, it's good if you do need them to have a high level of roadway getting into your community. So thank you all for being here and being patient with us, and I'm excited to vote yes on this when we get to that point.
And I myself also want to thank you for your patience. There, it has not always been an easy road, and it has not always been an un-bumpy road, as we saw with some of this stuff. But as was explained, this is the first one in a lot, a lot of years. I think it was the 50s when the last RID went through. Because of your work, we are looking at another RID that would greatly improve transportation through the whole county, allowing for access off of Highway 3 that would have a great change. And it's all going to be, if it does occur, it'll all be built off of your backs because you're the ones that helped us to learn how to redo this and how to bring this forward again. And so I know in particular, there are some of you that really, really have been behind the scenes working so hard. Matter of fact. Mind if I have him stand?
Sure.
Please stand. You. So IT will be supporting this, and I thank you for bringing it forward. You've done the county, yourself a service, but you've done the county a service by re-teaching us how to do this. This is going to be our first new real road in many years as well, not just RID, just any new road, but this is starting at the beginning of a lot of great things to come. So thank you for everything you've done.
I'll just make one other comment, just one more pitch for tip cap. So now that you're all road experts, having gone through this process, we would love to have you all apply to be on our Transportation Citizens Advisory Panel. Loretta will be happy to get you signed up after this meeting, but this is the kind of work you get to do on that group. And we need more representation from my Commissioner District, District 2, where you all live. And so see Loretta or me on your way out the door while you're still riding the, riding the wave of this exciting road improvement district approval. That's my pitch.
Because it's one minute, so I'm going to go ahead and read it one more time for the vote. Ladies and gentlemen, there is a motion on the floor, a motion as a second for a resolution finding the formation and construction feasible for the Shetland Road Improvement District, RID number 2024-01, and hereby approve the ordering of the improvements and integrate this section of Shetland Road into the county road system contingent upon determination of nonsignificance DNS being issued on April 15th, 2024, or August 15th, 2024. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Are there any opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is, this hearing is closed. Thank you, guys. Now you can have it. Yes?
Could I ask Loretta to kind of give them an idea of what the process looks like?
Please, Loretta?
What our schedule looks like?
Step four, please.
All right, so next step is making sure that we have the right-of-way dedication, the deeds in hand, so that we actually have the right to go out there and do things on, on that property. And I know that Lovejoy has received four or back so far.
Four, thirteen different property owners.
So as soon as we get those wrangled, and then the 15th comes on the SEPA determination, then we will be able to go out and perform the chip seal work. And that won't be immediate because Mike and his crew have all kinds of other crazy construction activities underway. But I believe, Mike, that around September is what you're thinking is?
Okay, so the supply, the chip sealing is over, but the supplier for the oil is going to save us some in September. So if we get some weather in September, we'll come in and do it.
So then, once that is done, we'll tally up what are the actual costs for the improvement, and that's when we start the work about the final assessment role. So you all will be back here in another hearing. We'll come back to commissioners to set a hearing, what the method for the final assessment is, and then go through the final assessment process. And that will also have some work between the assessor's office, the treasurer's office, and ourselves. And of course, commissioners about this makes sense and how we want to proceed on final assessments.
Thank you, Loretta.
Yep.
Okay, so next up on our agenda, we're going to go ahead and do it in short form if we can. We're going to move to the Board Calendar Report. Commissioner Shute, if you don't mind leading us off, Commissioner Trask and myself.
Sure, thanks, Mr. Chair. Going forward today, I have a Board of Health special meeting. Also be at an event with Congressman Kilmer, as well as a MaceCom Board of Directors meeting, Criminal Justice Working Team, IT Steering Committee, Ecosystem Coordination Board, all later on this week. And then I am heading out to my secure undisclosed location for a little bit of vacation, and I'll see you all when I see you.
Well, that's exciting, your secure, unsecure location. So we do have our, our special Board of Health meeting coming up next. I will also be at the Kilmer Appreciation Event. Tomorrow, I have WAC County Revenue Legislative Priority Work Group, Public Works Board Executive Committee meeting, ribbon cutting for, I'm hoping to be there, Sweet Time Massage Studio, and that's in Shelton here. Public Works Broad Bed Meeting, graduation on Friday. Gosh, I cannot tell you how excited and proud of him I am. It's just so cool. Then we have our briefing on Monday, WAC Virtual Assembly, canvassing board on Monday, Area Agency on Aging, an audit review by, by the State Auditor's Office, election certification on Tuesday, Turning Point Fundraising Committee, WAC County Revenue Legislative Priority Work Group meeting, Public Works Board Executive Committee meeting, Area Agency on Aging meeting. Church is having a children's ministry late day, so that should be fun. On Saturday, the 24th, we're going to Buffalo Wild Wings for a draft party. And then we're back here on Monday for briefings, virtual assembly. And then I might go to the Mason County Republican meeting on Monday, the 26th.
Hey, I'll be trying to attend the House Authority meeting. I haven't been on there for a while, so we'll see what they're up to. We have a special Board of Health meeting coming up, Olympic Regional Clean Air Authority meeting, North Mason School District Bond meeting, Rotary meeting, Peninsula Regional Transportation Organization meeting. I will be at the Realtor event, the WAC Virtual State Delegation. We haven't said at the time, but expect that'll happen between the two weeks that we have it. Mason Transit Authority, North Mason Chamber of Commerce. I appreciate you, Commissioner, doing the canvassing board and the certification as I'm on the ballot, and I shouldn't be there. With that being said, that's all we have for the moment, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sure, move we adjourn.
I'll second.
It is move and second we adjourn. Here is no objection. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Very, very much, thank you.